Everybody, I'd like to welcome you to the May 31st, 2018 meeting of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners. Before we get started, we'll actually have our flag salute. If I could get maybe Carrie Ute to lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carrie. And this is the time that we move on to our invocation, and I'll turn the introductions for our invocation this morning over to Commissioner Primisic.
Yes, fortunately, Dave Adams is here from our local radio station. My invocation person this morning called about 15 minutes ago to say he had been delayed, so Dave has kindly agreed to do our invocation this morning, so if you would please.
Thank you, Caroline.
Nice to have somebody else run the microphone for a while. All right, let's pray. Lord, we just ask, we ask for your guidance, we ask for your wisdom. Lord, we pray for the staff, we pray for the administrative staff and the commissioners. God, just give us the wisdom to govern justly, fairly, and, Lord, may we see your grace and your love and your compassion in the decisions rendered today and throughout this year in Yamhill County. Lord, bless this county, and we thank you for all the blessings that it has given us in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Dave. Before we get started, I just want to let anybody know, if you do have your cellphone with you, if you could please put it on vibrate so it doesn't ring, and if you have to take a, for the courtesy of others, if you have to take a call or do any texting during the meeting, I'd ask you to please step out into the hallway to get that done for the convenience of the commission and the others in participation today. The first thing on our agenda today, Commissioner Starrett, Commissioner Chair Starrett has asked to be included in the meeting today. She is on the telephone, and according to the Yamhill County Board Conduct and Operations Procedures, Section 309D, which basically says a commissioner may participate by electronic or telephonic means upon the concurrence of a majority of the board. For purposes to determine whether a majority of the board occurs in the electronic or telephonic participation of an absent commissioner, the absent commissioner may participate by electronic or telephonic means on the question only. So the question in front of us is if Commissioner Chair Starrett should be allowed to participate electronically, and I will call for the vote. So Commissioner Primisic?
That's fine with me.
Commissioner Starrett?
Aye.
And Commissioner Olson as vice chair, I'll vote aye. So let it show that the Commissioner Primisic and Commission Vice Chair Olson, along with Commission Chair Starrett, who is on electronically, have all concurred that Commissioner Starrett may participate in these findings. Hopefully, in this meeting, hopefully, we have the microphone set up so you'll all be able to hear, and hopefully, Mary, if you have any issues of not being able to hear us, just let us know, and we'll take that, take care of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the first thing on our agenda is public comment, and this time is a time period is served for public comment on any topic other than things that are currently on the agenda, a quasi-judicial land use manner, or a topic scheduled for a public hearing. Unless extended or restricted by the chair or a majority of the board, public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. So again, I know a lot of you are here to comment.
This is general public.
Okay, are here to comment on an issue on our agenda, so I'll ask you to wait till then, but it looks like we do have one public comment period registration card from the general public, and that's from Bart Ryerson. So Mr. Ryerson, if I can get you come forward, please, and state your name and your address for the public digital record.
My name is Bart Ryerson, 110 Hazel Nut Drive, Newburgh, Oregon. I'm here to talk to you today as a representative of the Chehalin Park and Rec District, a board member. We'd like to talk to you about the Yamhill County landfill property at the confluence of Chehalin Creek and the Willamette River. I was instrumental in developing the Chehalin paddle launch before I was a board member, and we actually came to the county commissioners and got a grant to help that project using some of the lottery dollars, and that was very well received by the community. We were using the private property owner's property, and Tom and Kate Edwards were gracious enough to let us use that property for a while, but there were, there were instances of people coming down and four wheeling through his billboard orchard, and after six years of operation, he rescinded the right for us to use that property. So we're now going, ready to start our second season without the paddle launch, and we would really like to have the county commissioners consider giving us access. We understand we would need to.
Excuse me, Bart, could you speak up a little bit? Mary can't hear you on the phone.
I'm sorry. So we would respectfully request that the county commissioners, but I'm not sure who has to do the authorization, if it's your county parks or the landfill, or if it's a decision for the commissioners, but we'd like to let you know that Chehalin Park and Recreation District is interested in developing that property as a paddle launch. We would like to, we would like to put in a park and water access for the rentals that we do, but also for public access. Currently, there's very little public access to the Willamette unless you're a power voter, but there's a, there's a large component of our population that doesn't own a power vote. Do it, I mean, we have this great resource in our front yards, and we'd really like to have more public access for that. And we understand there's some environmental concerns, there are some monitoring wells. I believe the landfill's been closed for at least 35 years now, and there, there are typically limitations on that kind of property that prevent building structures, and so it's, there are limited uses for that type of property. In a, in a perfect situation, we'd also like to be able to construct.
Let us use the microphone. We can't hear back here.
Can you move the mic closer to your side?
Move the microphone, Mr. Ryerson, Bart, move it up towards you.
I'll try to speak a little bit louder.
There, that's better.
We would love to develop a riverfront park for, and incorporate that property into our trail system. We, we've done something similar at the Ewing Young Park where that was the old Willburg landfill, and we've done some development and trails all around there that are very well received by, and we would love to be able to connect those trails. There was some great historical significance to that, that area. Ewing Young was the first white settler on this side of the Willamette, and he had his grist mill and a store near where Hoover Pond is now, that's at Ewing Young Park, which is the park that we own, and that's just, just up about a mile up Chehalin Creek. And, and like I said, we'd like to connect the trails that we currently have at Ewing Young Park, and eventually connect the trails, you know, all along the waterfront, but we think this is a great opportunity, and hoping there's some way the county be willing to work with us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ryerson. What I'll do is, I think since our planning director and our planning staff is here, they can go through this a little, little bit, or they can contact you offline and work with you offline to go over some of the issues surrounding that, so Ken, do you want to take that under advisement, please?
Yeah, we can do that. I can forward on the email that I sent to Don Clemmons that invited him to have a dialogue about this, but also made him aware that we'd need to have him take over the monitoring and him take over the, all of the liability and responsibility of the landfill, and I'll send that to you, and we can have some further conversations about that.
Great. Don is actually here with me today. He was.
Yeah, we saw, we saw him back there.
All right. So yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Bart. That is the only written public comment request I have for general comments. Is there anybody else who wants to make a general comment? Go ahead, go ahead.
She has a sheet in there.
But that, is this, is this regarding the trail?
It's a branch of the trail, simultaneous, a side hustle to make economic development for the community, not for the trail, but a separate issue. It's a separate issue.
Where should we, where should we address that?
It's only three minutes.
I mean, if it's truly a separate issue.
If it's truly a separate issue and doesn't have anything to do with our acting on the trail itself?
It's not on the trail itself, it's, it's.
Well, then, why don't you, why don't you come forward and state your name and your address for the record?
Thank you very much for your time. My name is Dana Gray, 315 South Maple Street, Yamhill, 97148, population 1,000. I am the, one of the city of Yamhill's councilors. My role is to be a visionary, to be a representative of the people, and to be a team player. So on that note, what I want to say is, while building the West Sider Trail changes history, let's have a positive impact by creating pride and supplemental income.
Dana, if we can get you to pause for a minute, we have a comment from our legal counsel.
This is related to the agenda item, so if you wouldn't mind.
But it's a supplemental income stream that is.
But it, but it is still for economic development, it's still related to the trail. So I will put your card back in order, and when we get to that issue, you can come forward.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do we have any other public comment who did not fill out a card? If hearing none, we will move right along. The next thing on our agenda is our consent agenda. We have several things on the consent agenda, and I want to just make sure the audience knows that any commissioner can request to have any particular item removed from the consent agenda to be discussed separately. So at this time, I will ask for input and approval or vote on the consent agenda.
Commissioner Olson, this is Commissioner Starrett. I would like to remove items two and three from the consent agenda for discussion, please.
Okay, thank you, Commission Chair. So we will move items two and three from the consent agenda, and we will consider those as a separate piece of business. Is there anything else that the commission would like removed from the consent agenda?
No, Commissioner, thank you.
Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
So we have a move by Commissioner Chair Starrett, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Let it show that the consent agenda with the removal of items number two and items number three has been unanimously approved by Commissioner Primisic, Commission Chair Starrett, and Commission Vice Chair Olson. Thank you very much, commissioners. That moves us on to old business, and old business is reconsideration of a motion.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Yes.
Before you get there, you should consider the items that were removed from the consent agenda.
Oh, first, do those first.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Christian. The two items that were asked to be removed from the consent agenda, item number two is approval to submit a grant proposal to ODOT Transportation Growth Management, or TGM, for $110,000. TGM requires a match of $15,000, 12% of in-kind contributions. TGM and matching funds are to fund a portion of the Yamhailas West Sider Trail Master Plan Project. Application is due June 8th, 2018, so I'll open that up for discussion, so Commission Chair Prim, uh, Commission Chair Starrett?
Yes, Commissioner Olson, thank you very much. Yes, I think in regard to both items two and three, and I will, I will discuss them both as one, but if you want to do each one separately, item two, the TPN grant, I think it is irresponsible for the county to be applying for, we're receiving any additional grant until and unless the ownership issue settles, and I think it's far settled, and I think also when you look at the staff time that is incurred in putting these grants together, I think that we haven't addressed not only the ownership issue, but impact to our working farm. So I think with that in mind, I would vote, I would be opposed to approving this grant application.
And I take it that would be the same with item number three, which is approval to submit a proposal for the Travel Oregon Competitive Grant for $56,250. Grant requires a cash match of 18,725 or 25%. Grant match funds will be used to partially fund the Yamhailas West Side Trail and Plan Master Plan Project, so I take it your comments apply to that one also, Mary?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner Primisic?
Yes, I'm moving approval of both items two and three.
Okay, we have a motion, motion for approval of items two and three. I will go ahead and call for the, call for the vote, all those in favor? Oh, yes.
I was going to say, if folks had public comment that they wanted to make on this particular agenda item, is that what you're?
That is correct. I actually have a comment card on these two items.
Okay.
I didn't, let's see, that kind of, oh, there you are, Wendy, okay. I didn't know, it just says trail, so I didn't know if it was on farther on or this.
Agenda two and three, consent items three.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I missed that. So if you would state your name and your address for the record, please?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Olson, Commissioner Primisic, and members of the county and audience. My name is Wendy Kellington. My name is Wendy Kellington, I'm an attorney. I am representing the Van Dyke family and the Van Dyke Farm entities concerning the trail, and I'll talk, talk about that with you separately. With regard to this particular consent agenda item that was removed and is now a regular business item, I would respectfully request that you defer making a decision on these proposed grant funding requests for two categorical reasons. One is on May 15th, a majority of the Board of Commissioners denied the proposal that what you're about to approve is completely contrary to. So you made findings in the denial that cannot be reconciled with the representations and statements being made in the grant application. That's the first problem. The second is that the grant application form includes a number, including three, findings that are contrary to your record, contrary to what you have heard from your farmers, and combative, and they have no place in a application to a funding agency under the circumstances. The first category is that throughout the grant application, it talks about the county's ownership of the trail, and as Chair Starrett has mentioned, the ownership of the trail that the county asserts is not supported by the law. You have a different record for the trail proposal going forward next, a letter from the former 30-year General Counsel for First American Title, that you do not own the Van Dykes segment of the trail. The, the proposed grant application talks about farm impacts being mitigated, and that the to-be-funded master plan will rely on the mitigation in the farm impacts document that was rejected by the county board on May 15th to supply the mitigation, presumably the sole mitigation, that will be applied on the trail. Given the combative relationship between the county staff advocates and the farmers, there's a great concern that limiting the mitigation in the planning documents to those inadequate mitigations that are listed in the farm findings will result in significant damage to your farms, and wedding you to that damage in a grant document, not in a planning document. Makes no sense. And finally, the overwhelming majority of your agricultural community does not support and has advised you in testimony that the trail is deleterious to the continuation of accepted farming practices and commercial farming along the corridor, and so the findings in the grant application, that the money to be spent is supportive of agriculture along the trail, is simply false. So you are being asked to approve a grant application that is patently false, and I would hope that at a minimum, you would defer until you go through the public hearing next scheduled, and even that, after that, with regard to the title issue, which you will not solve today, and you won't solve for a couple of years probably, because as was spoken by your attorney, on May 15th, the county intends to litigate that issue, so you're just not ready to apply for this grant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Kellington. Do we have any other more comments? I want to speak specifically to the grant, the grant applications. So Brian, you want to speak specifically to items two and three, the grant applications?
Absolutely.
Okay, come forward, please, and again, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good morning, my name is Brian Schmidt, 7580 Northeast Hendrix Road, Carlton, Oregon, and when I filled out the card, my intention was, I'm sorry. I'm a little bit surprised that the consent agenda wasn't, was put up for, you know, that you mentioned it, because the things that I signed up for were to speak on that, and I thought, you know, that should have been caught since it's nowhere else in your meeting today, so why wouldn't it be those two items? So thank you. I want to thank Commissioner Starrett for picking up on that little hiccup there, with all due respect, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Brian. I'm just looking at your public comment card. It does state that you want to testify, but it makes no reference on here to testify on these items, so I was assuming it was on the actual agenda item itself and not these two particular items, but now that you testified, it's on, it's on record that you did provide that testimony.
Okay, pardon me, I, I admit, I may have made, may have made a mistake, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, does anybody else want to provide testimony on just the grant applications themselves? Okay, hearing none, a little bit of discussion around the.
Yeah, yeah, I believe I do, I do want to speak on the grants themselves, or should I let you correct me?
This is just on the grants itself and not on the trail? This is on the application, the county applying to the state for the grants?
Okay, I think so, I think I do. I think I do want to speak on that. Sorry for my lack of clarity here. So I, I had to, thank you very much, Mr. Olson, for mandating a farm study, and I hope, and I trust that you will still follow through with that, because we are not happy, and I think you know that, you and I have already discussed a little bit about that already, and also, thank you for letting me comment at your informal meeting last Tuesday, and also several other people, and also want to thank you for allowing me to speak with your counsel, you know, right then on the spot after the meeting, and I thought that was very beneficial, and I want to thank Todd, he allowed me to call him by Todd. We usually butt heads and snarl at each other, and we both need cable permits for our mouths because they're so dirty sometimes, but I wanted to thank him for, he has a very youthful attitude that he does bring behind that, you know, and I want to thank him for that, because that is an honestly, honest statement there, and, but anyhow, after speaking with Mr. Bonish and Todd about this, my questions, I kept asking why, and then this does get to the grant, why does the purchase agreement, I understand, has to be in this TSP amendment so that you guys can get the grant, so that you can build this great big huge bridge? And I asked him, why can't the farm study be separated from that, so that you can just go ahead and get your bridge? And then later I was reading on, and I see that you guys, that your counsel disagrees with the DLCD staff on whether or not you need a farm study, and that's, you know, Mr. Primisic has always been kind of, you know, unclear about that, so I'm not surprised it's in there, but then I read in there where it says that specifically excluded by existing roads, and then I read down here that if we get this bridge in, we can call this a multimodal corridor. In other words, we can call this a road. In other words, if we make this a road, we don't need to do a farm impact study. In other words, if we get this three and a half mile section declared a multimodal corridor, a road, then we can just say, you know what, farmers, the heck with you all, it doesn't matter. So, Mr. Primisic, you can tell this matters to me and Mr. Olson, but I am really upset and ticked, and I feel like I've been lied to, not by you, Mr. Olson, because I know that you're new to this, but, Mr. Primisic, every time I ask you a question, you just talk for 10 minutes, and you never answer my question, that's why you haven't heard from me for the past year, and, you know, I grew up in your presence, like since five years old, so, you know, that's kind of a big deal to me. So I just, I just want to say, do you guys think that, what, since we're farmers, Mr. Primisic, I'm not directing this to Mr. Olson, but you think that since we're farmers, we don't care, or that we're just stupid?
Brian?
Yeah.
I just want to interrupt you for a minute. This is time to provide testimony, it's not to question any of the commissioners, Billy, but I, but I understand your testimony, so.
So I, I'm getting at this grant, why is this grant part of this packaged with the farm impact study? Why are those together?
Okay, first, first of all, if I can have, I had that same conversation regarding the bridge and the road issue about if we built the bridge, would it be considered as a multimodal corridor, would it be considered a road? And I had that with Mr. Sadlo, and Todd, if you would like to talk about why that isn't, what, what we discussed, why that isn't a road, and it's not considered that the bridge itself is not built to be a road, it's not built to sustain a road?
We're not, no one, no one is proposing a road bridge, we're talking about a trail bridge, so I don't, I don't understand where that's coming from at all, and it makes absolutely no sense to me.
Okay, so I think mine, to me, and the way I understand it.
Yeah.
Is, is, it may be a difference in opinion, but the way I understand it is that, that it is to be a trail bridge, and there was no reference, anything I can find about that being a road, and therefore not having to have the farm impact study or analysis, so.
May, may I read the excerpt out of the Transportation Amendment Proposal? It says here specifically, so this is on page 10 of your TSP amendment application, it says, it says, "We do not agree with the DLCD staff, and this is why, because Section 5 specifically excludes by reference bikeways, footpaths, and recreational trails as a modification or part of an existing road." Okay, so you said it in there, so apparently you think this is an existing road, or you're going to make it an existing road.
I don't interpret it that way.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Brian, I, I think you're just reading it wrong, I'm sorry, but the, the reason that we did the farm impact findings was because a majority of the board asked that we make them and that we go through that process, and doing that also complies with DLCD's request that we adopt farm impact findings, and that we do that as part of a comprehensive plan amendment, and that's from the guidance that your, that the Farm Bureau provided to us, that we got separately from DLCD, and that is what we have proposed to do, is to adopt those findings. So we went through that process, we had two very large hearings, and we're going to be talking about it again today, but that's what that process is. We're not trying to avoid that process.
No, the last couple of statements has kind of veered away from the grant application itself and into the trail issues, so those kind of comments, I'd like you to, we're not talking about the TSP amendment right now, we're talking.
I am.
I know, but we are not, we're, we're talking about the specific, that's right, we're talking about the specific grant applications.
Why is it in here, why, why is this in here about existing roads, and thus not having to do a farm study if it's an existing road? Why is that relevant?
Wow.
Section 5, page 10 of your TSP amendment.
Taking it completely out of context, I don't know.
Well, I have it right here, if you'd like to read it.
But Brian, again, I'd ask, I'd invite you to come forward again when we talk about the, the actual agenda item for the TSP amendment.
Yes, pardon my lack of order, thank you.
Right, so, so come, come forward at that time.
Okay, pardon me, everybody.
Escape that. Thank you, Brian. Is there anybody else that would like to speak about, and this again, is just about the grant application itself and not about issues related with the trail? the grant application itself and not about issues related with the trail? Mr. Van Dyke, come on up and state your name and record.
Can everyone hear me all right? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. Jim Van Dyke, I'm a landowner. My address is PO 400 Yamhill. Wendy is representing us today. She touched base on some of this, but I have, I don't do this for a living. I'm a farmer. So if I don't follow procedure or something, please forgive me. Help me out. The grant that you're trying to go forward with, the grant you're trying to go forward with is supposed to have addressed a few issues that I, in my little brain, haven't figured out yet. We hear, this project started out rails to trails. All I'm hearing at this meeting is trails, 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 trails. That's what we're applying for, correct? Is that correct?
It's a grant application to a master plan for a trail.
All right. What happened to the rails? I think, I think that's a big item here. You are going forward with something that isn't legal. When this land was given to the railroad in, I think, 1872 for rail use only, what the heck happened to the rails? You, I've heard, I don't know, I've heard in the past that you were pushing forward with a trail. And then all of a sudden, you found out that this rail issue was part of it, so you call it a, what do you call it, a multimodal trail or something? Farmers don't understand that kind of talk, guys. We are, let's call it what it is. You guys are pushing a trail through. That's what our grant is for here. Has nothing to do with rails, folks. So that's one of my big concerns. At previous meetings, Chris Madsen has talked a little bit about, he has an ongoing suit with you on this land use ownership. And at that time, he was shut down. You said that this has nothing to do with Phase 1 of this project. Here, here goes my brain again. I think the things that you guys are trying to pass is a county ordinance, or whatever you call it, that says, "We're changing land use here." Well, that affects the whole county. It doesn't affect just Phase 1, does it? I don't know. I, I'm very ignorant about this stuff. So all this ties together. I think you need to understand, Mr. Madsen's lawsuit is ongoing. Now, we are going to pursue our right to ownership of that land, and I think you need to not go forward with this application.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, does any, does anybody want to talk, and again, this is about the grants, only if you, I know there's a lot of issues regarding the trail itself, but since we're only talking about the grant application itself, I want to stick to that topic. And if we hear no more, what we'll do is I'll call for discussion, and let's start with you, Commissioner Primisich.
Yes. As was pointed out, this is a request for grant application. Even if we're successful in getting the grant, the, we have a date that those grant requests need to be filed by. Even if we're successful, we cannot do anything with these grant fundings until the questions raised have been clarified through our, our legal. So all this is doing is allowing us to move forward with the application and to get the money to do these projects if, in fact, we have a clear pathway forward. So we are in no way circumventing any laws, rules, or anything in requesting that we get this funding from the state. These dollars are out there. They can only be used for these types of projects. It's not like we're taking money that could be used to pave a road or do something else. These dollars are effectively for specifically working on trails. We are moving forward with the grant application for the purpose of being a part of those people who are going to get that funding. If, in fact, again, we are successful, we can't spend that money until all the other things are done, and we may end up having to relinquish the grant if, in fact, we can't get to that point in a timely fashion. But to not apply simply because we still have some steps to cover would be, I think, the wrong thing to do. If we can get, if we can get the application approved and we can't move forward with it, the money goes back and they will put it in the pot for somebody else. But we won't, we have no chance for it if we don't do the application. So my motion still stands. I would like to approve both two and three.
Okay, Commissioner Chair Starett.
Yes, I just want to, just to comment on Commissioner Primisich's assessment of relinquishing grants. You know, in the past, we've had some concerns about deadlines, and whenever we get the bums rush as far as deadlines, and we've got to approve these now, we better get the money because someone else will, I think that sends the wrong message because we have not cleaned out and we have not addressed these issues satisfactorily. We have two significant issues on the table. That's impact to working farms that have not been satisfactorily addressed, and we also have ownership of the trail, which as we know is in litigation, which is costing the county money, and this is just the beginning. So to apply for grants and to accept money without having initially achieved closure in those steps, I think is, is irresponsible.
Okay, thank you, Commission Chair. Few of my comments is, I appreciated the testimony from Ms. Kenny Kellington, but in my mind, the, the right of ownership is totally a separate issue from the grants because no matter what we do, the right of ownership is going to be decided in a court of, court of law. And to put this off based on that right of ownership, I'm going under the assumption that the county does own the property. Now, that could be wrong, and it could be proven wrong in a court of, court of law, which, which I'm okay with that. But to say we're not going to apply for the grant, to say we're not going to apply for the grants because the ownership has not been determined, I believe the ownership has been determined. Now, we can be proven wrong, and, you know, who knows how the courts are going to rule. But I do not, I feel that's a total separate issue that will be decided by the courts of law, whether we go forward with the grant or whether, application, or whether we don't go. And to get back to what Commissioner Primisich said, that applying for the grant, number one, does not require that we take the grant, it does not ensure that the grant is going to be approved, this is just an application process. And to me, that's very important because part of that application, or the application for the grant, is to do a master plan. A lot of what I've committed to is making sure that we do a master plan that actually identifies more of those impacts, and we'll get into that later, contains one-on-one communications with the property owners. Without a master plan, that can't happen. So, so I'm with Commissioner Primisich, and I vote that we should move, I guess I'll call for the vote, and he made the motion, but I also believe we should move forward with the grant application. So I'll call, Commissioner, you made the motion, Commissioner Primisich, to move forward with the grant application?
I did.
We have that on the ta, table. We'll call for the vote. Commissioner, Commissioner Chair Starett.
I vote no.
Commissioner Primisich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chair, Vice Chair Olson votes yes. So let it show for the record that as far as the grant application itself goes, and this is just for the submittal of the grant to ODOT in the Travel, Oregon, Commissioner Chair Starett voted no. Commissioner Primisich voted yes. Commissioner Olson voted yes. So it passes the board on a two-to-one, two-to-one vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commission Chair. Okay, now let's, let's move forward then to the next issue. Let me pull my agenda here. Okay, now we'll move on to old business, which is Item C on our agenda. Item C is reconsideration of a motion to approve a proposed amendment to Yamhill County's Transportation System Plan, or TSP, for the Rails 2 Trails Project, a part of the transportation element of the county comprehensive plan, acknowledging the county purchase of an approximate 12-mile segment of a former Union Pacific Rail Corridor, and immediate plans to develop a multimodal trail in the segment of the corridor extending from the city of Yamhill south to the city of Carlton. And this is a continued, being continued from May 15, 2018. And even though no new testimony is anticipated to be taken, because this was noticed and we have invited new testimony, I have been given this by staff, this is all the testimony that's been submitted up until this time, I believe, Stephanie, that we've gotten.
There are two additional.
And there are two additional. I just want everybody to know, since we did elect to accept public testimony, that this will, and comments, this will go in the official record of the proceedings and will be available to anyone, all the testimony that people have submitted in writing, testimony, we're going to allow verbal testimony. And I will talk about that, but anything that has been submitted will go in the public record and will be, will be available for anybody's, anybody's views. We, so this is just another one. So everything that we've gotten up until now, since we've been in this, this room, is actually, will be included in the public record. Now, normally, the way it was noticed, it said that the, it would be a public notice and the county would not take any additional testimonies. You can see by the writing, we have taken additional testimony. I will invite additional testimony during this proceeding. What I do ask, though, is if you submitted written testimony, since that is part of the public record, or that you actually just say, "I've submitted written testimony." If it's new testimony that wasn't submitted up until this time, feel more free than come forward and state that testimony. And if you've already turned in applicable testimony that is part of the public record, you can guarantee that it is on the public record, and you could just say, "I've already turned in testimony that's on the, on the public record." So that being said, I'm going to go through the cards I have first to call on those that would, that have filled out a comment card for providing public testimony. And the first one, I said, Jim, do you want to testify again, or did you already say what you needed to say during?
Basically, I've said what I...
Okay. So your information also will be included in the public ra, public record. Okay, and Brian, this is your chance now, if you want to come forward again and testify.
Should you put me in the back of the stack since I already spoke a lot of chances?
I will do that if you, if that's your desire.
Yes.
Okay, and then Ben Van Dyke? Come on forward, Ben. And again, if you've already submitted testimony, you don't need to replace all the testimony, you can be insured it is on the public record, but go ahead.
Ben Van Dyke, 15221 Northwest Westside Road in Yamhill. Submitted some information there for you guys to look at, but in the farm impact study, there was never any good financials that were included with that, so I took the time to break that out for you and what that would cost our operation. And so that's what's submitted for you guys in the spreadsheet. That is one crop growing year, so one season for one farm. We have, currently on this section, we have two farms that border this. And like I said, a couple of different cropping options. So this might vary for other operations, but on our operation, as you can see, by having to have additional people to spot for people on the trail with our new spray buffer zones, for taking the time to cross the trail, open and close gates, and that sort of thing, it's going to take a few extra people. So, like I said, $4,700 a year on a grass seed crop is what that would cost us if you put the trail through there. So I just wanted you guys to have that information. And so, as counsel said, he said it was a non-significant impact. I don't know to you, but $4,500 bucks is a pretty significant impact, if you're asking me. Plus the additional labor, plus the additional lack of efficiency that we'd have to do to have these extra people there, so. On the other note, off the farm topic, as a taxpayer, I just keep looking at these trail heads on Highway 240, crosses Friar Road. Those two places concern me, that, that our county is not ready for a trail there. And it's going to cost additional county money or state money to improve those roadways. Otherwise, you have trails that are not accessible safely for bicyclists or pedestrians. And I don't feel that our county should be spending taxpayer money to address those roads just to make them accessible to a trail when there are plenty of other roads that need fixed in this county and in the state. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Very good information. You tend to, that will become part of the public, public record, and so will your com, comments that you just stated will also become part of the public record.
Thank you.
So, thank you. And the next one I have on my list is Jean Belt. So, Mr. Belt, if you'd like to come forward, please, and provide testimony. If you can, Mr. Belt, if you can talk, and she'll help you get the microphone closer, so we want to, we just want to make sure everybody can hear you.
I have a copy of, of each of the three commissioners. I don't know if the lady got it or she handed it up.
That's what you got.
That's, well, yes, we just, we just got that. We just got that...
Gmail.
Right now from beltduo@gmail.com. We just, we have that as part of the public record.
Well, anyway, I'll read this. This pretty well covers. My wife and I attended a May 3 meeting on the Yamhill Trail Hearing, also the May 1. Marlene testified for both of us on May 3 on our leased property, 6488, 6490, and 6492, Highway 240 Yamhill. I testified at the May 15 hearing. I was previously told Yamhill County Counselor Todd Sadlo handled the land issue, land use issues for Yamhill County. So we met with him, find a way to protect our property right. He told me, at that time, we did not need a zoning team to use my building at 6492, Highway 240, for storage unit. He also told me I could make a caretaker apartment there also. A few days later, Mike Kemper came to the property and posted a stop work order because he had a report that I was about to make 40 units and a caregiver apartment. I was, I was told by Ken Friday I needed to have a zoning on the property changed from heavy industrial to light. So, okay, I made the application for it and sent it to Union Pacific to sign as they were the owner of the leased land my buildings are on. The Union Pacific person I dealt with was J.C. Bazell. My correspondent with her was going for a while, I wasn't, till Ms. Bazell received a call from Yamhill County Planning stating I wasn't in compliance with the county. And that report killed my request to Union Pacific. The whole reason I put in for the zoning was to be in compliance with the county and doing what my county told me I should do. At the May 15 meeting, Todd Sadlo told the planning commission that the bill paid very little to Union Pacific for our 20-year lease, and we also had an annual lease of $2,000 due to the corridor. The 2017 payment was $2,534, as it goes up 3% each year. We don't feel comfortable with Todd Sadlo. The county is canceled, is he? No interest, and that's our problem. Mr. Sadlo implied we... Sadler impliedly paid very little to the county, and I'm just a nuisance. And we would not go broke over those trails, taking the property, as we own a lot of property in the county. We feel Sadler, we feel Mr. Sadler was and is trying to convince people that we're not relevant or necessary to our I think about 200 families believe that buses are necessary, as they transport 400 children to school each morning, and 400 children home after school every school day. Mr. Sadler would be a nuisance, too, if it cost him in excess of $50,000 per year, which is what we would lose if we lost our bus cans. We have tried to find another site, but have not so far. We're trying to figure out why Mr. Sadler, Yamhill County Planning, are so set, causing us this trouble. Since the county bought the corridor, we have not received any help, county planning board, nor Mr. Todd Sadler. This is one of the many, and I know most of the trail supporters did not lay long or near a trail corridor. Would not be convenient, but yet our county and its local supporter, they're counting on our commission to do the right thing, support our local property owners and protect their right, their property rights. I don't see any way that I could think this trail was necessary, and I just say, "No trail."
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Belt. And just to make sure you're aware that the email you submitted, we do have that, and it will be entered into the public record. Now, I think we can go back to Ms. Gray. So, if you want to come back up, Dana, and ...
I apologize for being in the wrong place.
Oh, no problem whatsoever.
Okay. I come at the trail from another way, and that's economic development. First of all, I wanted to say thank you, and I put my name in the record. So, I have created a sample trail map as a souvenir. So, while building the West Sider Trail changes history, let's have a positive impact by creating pride and supplemental income for our residents. Let's be a role model for future generations by simultaneously creating a pathway that provides for new revenue streams. Build a bridge to the future with a solid foundation and infrastructure for a new local cottage industry, perhaps the Yamhill side hustle. Let's revolutionize and modernize the souvenir market. Remember great memories of Yamhill wine country with new, exciting, useful products, beautiful photos, and whimsical, too. This new network will educate, inspire, encourage, and unite locals and tourists, local craftspins and artists with handmade goods and light manufacturing, like mugs, t-shirts, et cetera. How about one-stop networking for local businesses? And showcase farmers' produce and products, like lavender, nuts, restaurants, whatever will make the farm highlighted. So, the platform. Let's begin with the trail map, which I will show you in a minute, and spread seeds, watch the plants grow. The possibilities are endless, levels and layers. I wish to show you a presentation at your convenience. I've been working on this for 20 years. So, I also just want to make a couple of other notes. And this is for the economy. Create a need, fill a niche. Instill pride. Let's give supplementary income for the residents. Let's have fun, laugh, and learn. You can make your own keepsake of Yamhill. Collect commemorative placemats. There will be goodwill freebies, fundraisers, contests, family events. Let's make this product no longer tacky and redefine the format of souvenirs for the special and, to be special and useful. And so, what I have created ...
If you can just show one and then give them to Carolina over here, she'll make sure that the commissioner, you could just show them, but we need you to give them to her.
Can I just show one? I want to make local history. No. Do you know about Hotel Royal? Okay, that's what Yamhill is about. That's the center. Let's, and Carlton has their image as wine. We've got to keep Yamhill, Yamhill. We want it to be low-key, right? But we need money. We all need money. You need an extra five grand a year? Okay. So, by publicizing, and I apologize, my word. So, there's no information about the trail map. Let's make it accessible. So, this is, I have one for the public record, and I have one for the counselors, and I appreciate your time. I think there are ways to make extra money.
Okay.
Can I give you the right one? I'm sorry, you're out, and we'll all have it. So, thank you very much.
I do have one point of clarification to ask you. Ms. Gray, now, I know when we first got up and you started talking during the grant, I just want to make sure that it's put on public record. Are you representing yourself or as a counselor of the city of Yamhill?
That's a good, that's a good point. Our next board meeting in Yamhill is June 13, and I will show this today.
So, right now, you're representing yourself as an individual citizen?
Yes, and a businessperson.
Okay.
That knows how to make jobs. I want to create jobs.
Thank you very much for the clarification, Dana. Okay, that brings us to our next one that would like to provide public comment, and that's Laura Cochran. So, Laura, if you can come up, please, and state your name and address for the digital record.
Good morning. Laura Cochran, and my mailing address is P.O. Box 992 in Newburgh, Oregon. I've been a resident since 1978. So, I just wanted to say, in the 2018 TGM grant application that you just passed, the first stated objective is safety. Because of the three bicycle fatalities that occurred on the shoulder, I believe that information is misleading and that safety is not supported by the facts of those cases. And the new information that I bring is that I fired the contractor, Richard King, in June of 2014 for stealing $8,000 from me and not paying my subs and by being continually under the influence. And in August of 2014, Mr. King is the man responsible for the third bicycle fatality. And he ran off the road and killed that bicycle in Carlton, and then he fled Oregon for two years and was later extradited for homicide and meth. And so, my concern is that Mr. King would have killed anything or anyone in his path because he was allegedly high on meth. So, when he drove off the highway to run over the bicycle, I think it could have been a farmer in his driveway or a mom checking the mailbox. I think anything in Mr. King's meth-impaired path would have been mowed over that day. So, the safety concerns, the argument doesn't work for me, because non-motorized will continue to utilize public roads in Yamhill County, even if presented with a safer option. So, that's my first concern. The second concern that I bring that's brand-new, that I don't think anyone else has addressed, is the financial impact on the farmers that the homeless camps are going to bring. And I'm maybe one of the few landlords in the room that's had to take two squatter evictions through the Oregon courts process. And it's very expensive. And I'm here to tell you, I've evicted squatters in Multnomah County properties, and I've evicted them off of my Medford properties. My lawyer bill in Medford for April for evicting squatters was over $6,000. And so, I don't think anybody's even thought about that, that these trails bring homeless camps. I mean, just spend the night in Portland on any of their trails, and they just evicted 150 homeless camps off of just one mile section in Portland. And so, I just want to remind you that there's a man, a father, he's recovering from 17 stab wounds in Portland right now, because he asked a homeless man to move. And there's a mom, the pregnant lady in McMinnville, who was just stabbed in her own driveway. And so, my concern is that, at this point, tourists are the minority, and that the farmers and that those that they benefit right now are your majority. And Commissioner Primavich used the words, "to not proceed with the grant is the wrong thing to do." But I would just remind him that tourists don't flock to towns that are in the news for stabbings. Thank you.
I do have one question for you, because I don't know your business. One question of clarification.
Yes.
You talked about your Medford properties and the squatters and the homeless and your Portland properties.
Correct, sir.
Would you consider those trails urban or rural?
The Medford one is next to Park, so that one would be considered more rural because it's there. But the Portland one was in between Flavel and Southeast 82nd.
So, it's basically an urban, inside-the-city urban trail.
Yes, yes. One, yes, and one, no, I would say.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the clarity.
Okay, the next person we have is Billie Jean Matthews. So, Billie Jean, if you'd like, come forward, please. And again, Billie Jean, we ask you to get close to the microphone so everybody can hear you, and if you could state your name and your address for the record, please.
Billie Jean Matthews, 19643 Northwest Goodrich Road. I have submitted some written testimony. I would like to add to it. I think that the additions of working with individual property owners, okay, is a step forward. But realize that there has been so much damage to trust of the people who live along this trail, that it's not going to be an easy road. And any sign of deception or trying to set one against the other is not going to work. So, be straight with it. Also realize, and I'll say this again, these people that own property along this trail, some of them in families for well over 100 years, know this land better than any newcomers. There are alternatives. It does not have to be along the railroad grade. That may not be the best trail for the users or the property owners, but you have got to talk to the owners, and you've got to draw them together to work on this issue as a unit. You can't try to set one against the other. Trust has already been damaged way too much. If you truly want a trail and you want it to be inclusive of the entire community, you need to do it right.
Okay. Thank you, Billie Jean. So, I guess that takes us back to you, Brian. So, come on forward and sit down, and we already know your name and your address, so you don't have to announce it again.
Okay, and I want to apologize for my disruption in your order.
That's fine.
Thank you. Okay, so, I submitted a little bit of testimony, and speaking one-on-one stuff doesn't really work, because I got to do that Tuesday with Todd and Mr. Bonishin, and they said, "Why haven't you told us about your livestock operation, my cattle along the proposed railroad?" And I said, "What do you mean? I've been telling you about you guys petting my cow and putting it on your video." And he goes, "Mr., I said I wouldn't quote you, didn't I?" Well, it was said at the meeting that we thought that was at your Philbert Orchard. So, a gun club. Well, I don't keep cows in my Philbert Orchard, okay? So, I like to say this one-on-one stuff doesn't work, because at that meeting, you guys said you would add some things to the plan, and then when I wanted to do that and everyone left the room, it was a totally different attitude. So, I don't know what's going on there. So, I think, Ms. Olson, I want to thank you for trying to follow proper process, and that seems to be apparent here when you're running things and adding all these meetings and stuff. But I want to say, this Farm Impact Study is not complete. It should be about three months or two months, okay? Farm Bureau does this all over the state, and they know how this stuff usually happens, and this is weird, that it only happens for four hours, and then the record's closed. That doesn't make any sense. And then we have this meeting here. That doesn't make any sense either. So, I want to say a few comments, Ms. Olson. These are not directed at you, and I'm not sure who to direct them to. They're certainly not directed to Commissioner Sterrett. I don't know whether to direct them to the staff or to direct them to someone else or what.
I think you just provide your comments and not worry about who they're directed to.
Thank you, sir. So, I think this is sneaky. I think it's lying. I think that it's fraudulent. I think this is really just trying to make a road status. It states very clearly in this, I'll provide you with these papers on my way out of the seat. And I think that it's just trying to get a road status so that you don't have to do the farm study, as you state, as Mr. Sadler states in here. And I think this money could, there's a whole list of other projects in Marion and Polk Counties that are not bicycle projects, but like, for example, at Marion Egg, they did a project there to benefit their interaction with the railroad or something like that, okay? That's on bike path, that they were eligible for MLAC money. So, I'd appreciate if we would just speak correctly about what these funds are for, okay? And that's all on the Connect Oregon website, if you want to see what kinds of, and you're on the board, Mr. Primavich, so you know that, and so does Ken Wright, so he should know that, too. So, I don't know what else to think unless somebody thinks that we're stupid because we work in agriculture, or someone's trying to trick you, Mr. Olson. I don't know what your opinion is on this revote, but I understand it's necessary to get these grant applications through. So, you know, I don't know if someone's trying to trick you to flip your vote, but I want you to realize that what's happening here is if you vote yes on this TSP amendment, what you're doing is you're taking the farmer's teeth away from them. You're taking the teeth out of the Luba litigation. You're taking the teeth out of the Farm Impact Study. Right now, we have state law that requires this farm study, and if you vote yes, you're saying, "Finished, next step." I would want you to realize that, because I think that you're being tricked. And like I said, Ms. Olson, I requested in my written testimony that these two things be separated. And I would also like to go ahead and finish my statement by requesting that my question be addressed, that I asked at the wrong time. Why does this farm study must, if it's not required, why can't we just fulfill Commissioner Sterrett's and Olson's request for a farm study by doing it on its own? On its own?
You know, does staff have any comments to that about separating the two, separating the TSP amendment from the actual farm study? I haven't heard a lot about that. I mean ...
No, I mean, it's been done. We did it in conjunction with the TSP.
But no, but I think what I hear Mr. Schmidt saying is, "Why can't the two be separated out into different items, that the TSP is done as the TSP amendment without any reference to the Farm Impact Study?" Is that what you're getting to?
Yes, sir. Isn't that what that is?
Go ahead, Todd.
I mean, I think they could, but we chose not to do it that way.
Yeah, the guidance that we followed from DLCD said to do it this way, and this is the way we've done it. And so, that's why.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. Okay, Brian, go ahead, if you have anything to add.
Yeah, so you just said you're doing it because DLCD said so, but isn't here, you kind of like go to DLCD, like DLCD, "We're going against ..." You say it right here. Can I read it? May I read it to you?
It's your testimony.
Okay, I'll read it to you.
Mr. Chair, the reason that that's in there is in an abundance of caution to make sure that when, when or if this is appealed, that I have addressed the issue and I can raise it again before Luba.
Okay, thank you. And Brian, I'll let you go ahead and read that, since you requested to read it.
Okay, pardon me, I'm probably over time. Thank you, Ms. Olson. It says, this is page 10 again of your TSP amendment in 1.9. It says, "The county does not agree with DLCD staff's analysis. It is possible that a court or Luba would agree with DLCD staff's interpretation of the rule, and it is also possible that DLCD staff's interpretation would be rejected. DLCD staff's interpretation requires an assumption that the section indicates that this farm study, ORS 215-296, applies to all uses on the list, while Section 5 specifically excludes bikeways and other recreational trails, not otherwise allowed as a modification or part of an existing road." So, you think this is an existing road. Yes, you do. You think this is an existing road. And if you think you're going to pull this over us and trick us all, because we're all a bunch of farmers ...
Brian, no acquisitions, please, just state the facts.
I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. I should resign from my speaking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Give these to ...
Thank you, Brian. Just hand them over to ... So come on forward and testify on this one also.
Please, sir, I have comment cards on this one as well. My name is Wendy Kellington. My name is Wendy, thank you. My name is Wendy Kellington. I'm an attorney. I represent the Van Dyke family individually as well as their...
Could you put it closer, please?
A little bit closer still.
Wow. You know, when we did the transcription, the closer they got, the harder it was to hear on tape the audio.
Different facility.
Representing the Van Dyke families individually as well as their farming entities. And I have provided to you a number of things that I presume you have today. I also have provided two additional exhibits that should be in front of you. One is Exhibit 6, which is the Connect Oregon Grant Application. And the other is a copy of the Matson deed, which is Exhibit 7. And those, together with my letter, are exhibits for today, for the record. Before I begin my prepared remarks, I want to clear up a significant misunderstanding that Commissioner Prusmanich, and I think you, Vice Chair Olson, have. And your staff has not clarified that for you, and so I'm going to do it. What you approved with regard to the grant application and what you're being asked to approve today are documents that say that the trail is ready now for immediate construction. The grant application has a specific requisite that says, in my Exhibit 3, page 12 at the bottom, that the proposed project sponsor readiness and capacity, that the local government is ready and able to begin the project within the TGM timetable, which is 12 months. The previous page in that TGM grant says 12 months. So please make no mistake, this is not a situation where there is some sort of a punting that's going on, or as I believe was stated, that if the county discovers what the law says, and that is that it doesn't own railroad rights of way, that those have been extinguished by abandonment, that it's not going to be able to move forward with this proposal. But this is, the county is representing that it's ready and able to do so, which is not accurate, and I think it's not what you understand.
It's big, yeah.
The second thing is that the title of the ordinance today that you're moving forward with is for the immediate plans, not future plans, but immediate plans to develop a multimodal trail in the segment from city of Yam Hill south to Carlton. That's a 2.4-mile segment that affects property that the Van Dykes own, including the railroad right-of-way. So with those, the main things I want to bring to your attention. I have a whole bunch of legal reasons why reconsideration today is inappropriate and a variety of serious legal problems with the proposal. I'm not going to go over those with you now. I'm going to go over that, the most important problem you have is that you don't own, you don't own this railroad right-of-way. And you've been told that by real estate experts, that railroad right-of-way is extinguished when it's abandoned. You are also aware that you cannot immediately develop this trail. You have also been told that regardless of what you think about your ownership, that the trail use is inconsistent with the farmers who own properties on either side of the railroad right-of-way, their indisputable rights to cross back and forth over the railroad right-of-way to serve their farm needs. There is also no plan for any mitigation for the significant farm impacts here of the fact, and I will remind you, that during harvest, which is the time when the TGM grant application promises the state that there will be the greatest number of tourists using the trail, that every five minutes, every five minutes, farm equipment is going back and forth over the railroad right-of-way that has been abandoned to get crops from one side to the other to market. That is completely inconsistent, completely inconsistent with any idea that you can be having a thousand-person-tall bike race or a bunch of equestrians galloping through the same area. There is no mitigation planned for the undisputed testimony in the record that farm fires happen. And two years ago, there was a grain fire on this very property in the 2.43, whatever it is, mile segment between Yam Hill County and the, or city of Yam Hill and the city of Carlton. Had there been thousands, hundreds, scores of kids and families stranded on the trail, tragedy would have ensued. And while your counsel, who is also representing the applicant, and so is a worthy advocate for the project, has told you that, "Well, fire isn't really an issue because there can be fires on any road, and really, the trail will provide better access for emergency vehicles." Just think about that a little bit. If a fire starts in the middle of a field where there is no other access, and you got a bunch of people on there, you can't get to them. And that's the undisputed fact. So there's no mitigation for that either. And then the fire property, I'm told, was a quarter mile to the north of Phase 1, so it's right there.
Still our property.
And still the Van Dykes' property. And the last mitigation that has clearly not been dealt with yet is the fact that farm animals get spooked. And we got a bunch of buffalo, we got a buffalo farm in this segment. And when a bunch of buffalo gets spooked by a bunch of horses or by a peloton of racing bicyclists, they're going to charge a fence, and they're going to bust it. Unless you're doing a Jurassic Park fence, which we don't even know what's contemplated, you don't have an adequate mitigation. Those are some of the problems. So there are some problems with relying on the applicant and the applicant's advocate to obtain the county's objective information with regard to farm impact standards. Whereas city folks like me, like Mr. Sadlo, may think that they know best about what's a real farm problem and what isn't, that really farmers ought not worry about people defecating in their fields or what the federal government might think about that. The fact is, farmers are paid to worry about that, and they do. And so when you have advocates, and the same people who are writing the findings about what the evidence says, you don't have objective mitigation. And the way it's set up, it's not designed to be. There's nothing wrong with that. But you folks have to be the objective arbiters of what the evidence says. You cannot rely on Mr. Sadlo or me. You need to rely on what your farmers have told you. And I think you know what that is. But you got to take them seriously. And then with regard to title, did you get the real story? Did you get the whole story? No, of course not. An advocate isn't going to tell you the whole story because they want you to think that they have, and they're in litigation with your farmers over it. They want you to think that they've got a shot at claiming title, taking property away from farmers. And that's okay, but that's not the whole story. So where you were told...
Ms. Kellington, you've been about nine minutes now. If I can get you to wrap up the next couple of minutes, please.
In your 2012 TSP, you recite that the railroad corridor is abandoned. In your 2015 grant application, that is Exhibit 6 in your papers I provided today, your grant application to the state says that the right-of-way is abandoned. The law says, once a right-of-way is abandoned, it can't be revived. Everybody knows that. And so while I think your attorneys and Mr. Brickley, former counsel for First American Title, who wrote an opinion later on the topic, which is Exhibit 2 to our materials, would tell you that the railroad right-of-way has been abandoned, can't be reactivated, and it's gone. The argument is being portrayed to you that goes something like this in more human terms. If you had an easement on your property that was for some friend of yours or just someone who lived behind you to get back and forth, for access purposes only, to get back and forth to their home, and they got a different access...
If I can get you to pause for a minute. We understand that Commissioner Starett got cut off for some reason.
No problem.
We're going to get her back on the phone. I want her to be able to hear all this, of course.
Hello?
Mary, are you there?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Mary. So go ahead, Ms. Kellington.
Let's say that on your property, you, your house property, you had an easement for someone to get to their property behind you, and they got a different access to the road. They didn't need to use the easement for road purposes anymore. They abandoned it, didn't use it for 10 years or so. And then the county buys that easement and thinks it's a really good place to put a homeless RV park. Well, it's transportation, and we're reviving the easement. Why can't we do that? That's what they're saying. Similarly, the county's position leads to the following, that, "Well, we bought this right-of-way. We can park a bunch of homeless RVs on it. We can turn it..." And that's a noble public purpose. You'd fill a room like this with homeless advocates to say, "That's a really dandy thing to do, to put a whole bunch of homeless people's RVs there." And it's really a road, isn't it? I mean, it was a railroad. And say that, "Well, the easement has been revived." You can't do that. And what I want to leave you with is the reason you can't do that is the purpose for which an easement or right-of-way is restricted means something. And the law will give credence to that. And whereas here, all of these deeds, all of them, and they aren't warranty deeds, that's ridiculous. I don't know where that came from. All of the warrant, all of the deeds that the railroad has have specific limitations. And your counsel knows that. There may be one or two. I haven't studied the whole corridor, but the ones I've seen for the Van Dykes and the Matsons, for that matter, and I don't represent Matson, all have that specific restriction and limitation that means when that railroad use goes away, it is gone. And trying to argueate and litigate with your farmers is something else, is the worst manners I can think of. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have one question. I'll clarify the chemistry because there's, I just need a point of clarification, if you'd be willing to take a point of clarification, for your testimony.
Thank you.
On the grant, you mentioned that the TGM grant said that the project had to be done within 12 months, and with litigation, everything wouldn't happen. What do you consider the beginning, would you consider the starting or creation of a master plan beginning a project? What do you, or do you consider construction beginning a project? What is your definition of beginning a project?
Well, it's not my definition, is it? It's what the TGM grant asks for. I don't know.
Because the TGM grant does not say for beginning construction.
Well, here's what it says. If you look at the grant, it's Exhibit 3, page 11 of the materials I provided to you. There's a master plan budget and scope of work, and it talks about the plan initiation, and it ends up with a presentation to the public. And that alone is 12 months. And I don't know if that's the sole scope because importantly, and this is again one of the problems with this grant, is that it's cagey. It's incomplete. It doesn't say. But what it says is, "The local government is ready and able to begin the project within the TGM timetable." And I will tell you that the people who think, and I think reasonably so, that they own this property are none too keen to allow the county to begin planning as if it owns it. And most of the time, as you know better than me, when some developer comes in to develop property that he doesn't own, then the, and the property owner says, "Wait a minute, they can't apply for development or a plan on my property." You guys say, "Yeah, you're right. Get out of here."
Okay, I think that answered my question. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Could I just clarify one?
Yeah, Todd, go ahead.
Commissioner, there's been a lot of talk about the costs of crossing the, or of using the frequency of crossing the right-of-way. The Van Dykes have, at this point, have not established a right to cross the right-of-way, which we now own. But we have said repeatedly that we want to accommodate them in their ability to cross it and that we, even if that inconveniences trail users. So just want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mary, can I respond?
No, you've already had yours, so I think legal...
So he's wrong.
But legal counsel is speaking. You've concluded your testimony.
And the right-of-way, the railroad abandoned the use of it for railroad, but they did not abandon their ownership of it. They continued to pay taxes on it to the present time. They've been planning with the county at least since 2012 for us to purchase it, to continue its use for transportation purposes.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Again, all's I'll say is that at this time, I'm hesitant to address anything regarding the ownership because the ownership will be litigated in a court of law. There's no doubt in my mind. And what we're here to do is vote on a transportation system plan amendment, and I try to separate out of that the actual ownership because I think it is a separate issue, and that will be litigated in a court of law. There's no question. It will be appealed. It will be lit, it will be litigated. So I think the opportunity for that to occur is in place, so. Okay, anybody else? I'll take one more. Brian, if you have anything different.
Just a request that you move to separate the farm study from the property purchase on the TSP amendment. I'm sure DLCD will understand. I could get both of them to separate the two. So the one you go ahead is along with the farm study for now.
Okay. I think that we got that on record.
Yeah.
Okay, and that was Brian Schmidt?
She fell off again?
Well, tell her to get away from the river wherever she's vacationing at and go to a desk. Everybody deserves a vacation. One more, please. We're having technical difficulties once again.
Hello?
Mary?
Yes?
Are you there?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Stay put, please.
Yeah, stay put, Mary. Quit moving around, would you?
I'm staying put. Apologies.
Oh, no apologies needed. We just concluded, Mary, just for your information, we just concluded the public testimony portion. Brian, do you have one more thing?
Did Mrs. Starett hear that?
I don't know if you heard, Brian Schmidt requested that the commission consider separating the Farm Impact Study out of the TSP amendment. And if you didn't hear that, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to the point now that we, there wasn't a public comment. We've had our public comment. And now the next item is the move for reconsideration, the motion to accept findings and mitigation as recommended and proceed with planning and development of the West Side Trail. There is one thing, and I don't know, Todd, is this the time to bring up the changes that you highlighted, or would that be during the discussion point?
Discussion.
During the discussion point, okay. I'll hold off that. So we have a recommendation, a move for reconsideration of the motion to accept the findings and mitigation as recommended and proceed with planning, development of the Yam Hill West Sider Trail. So that being said, I will entertain a motion for reconsideration. wasn't a public comment, we've had our public comment, and now the next item is the move for reconsideration, the motion to accept findings and mitigation as recommended, and proceed with planning and development of the West Side Trail. There is one thing, and I don't know, Todd, is this the time to bring up the changes that you highlighted, or would that be during the discussion point?
Discussion.
During the discussion point, okay. I'll hold off that. So, we have a recommendation, a move for reconsideration of the motion to accept the findings and mitigation as recommended, and proceed with planning and development of the Yamhill West Sider Trail. So, that being said, I will entertain a motion for reconsideration.
You have to make it, Commissioner.
Oh, that's right, because I was the one that voted no. I will make a motion that we approve the findings and mitigation as recommended.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, you would have to make the motion for reconsideration.
Oh, I will make the motion that we reconsider, reconsider the original motion. So, I'll make that motion. Do I have a, I'll call for the vote?
I, I-
Some discussion, please.
Yes, yes, go ahead, Mary.
Commissioner, I'd like to suggest that we amend the motion to separate the issues of the farm impact findings and the, and the TSP.
Okay, we have the discussions with, from Commissioner Sterrett to separate the two. I don't know if that's, there's any legal, I would like-
Well, right now, we're just, the motion is to reconsider our last vote, so that would come in a-
And that would come, Mary, the way I understand it, during the discussion phase.
Yes, and that's where I, since you had a motion, and I was calling for discussion, this is when I brought that up.
Okay, we will have, let me, let me refer to Christian on that.
So, Mary, just want to make sure you're asking that that be brought up. If the motion to reconsider passes, you want to include that information when they have the addition, the later discussion about whether or not to adopt the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. So, then we're back to the motion that is currently on the floor, as Commissioner Olson presented it.
Right.
Okay.
Are you calling for the question?
There's no further discussion on the reconsideration, so Commissioner Primisic?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Sterrett?
Nay.
Commissioner, this is Commissioner Olson. I will vote aye or vote with Commissioner Primisic. So, let the record show on the motion for reconsider, and this is only the motion for reconsideration, that Commissioners Primisic and Commissioner Olson voted in the affirmative with Commission Chair Sterrett voting in the negative. So, that being said, the motion for reconsideration is passed. Then we will go into, before we get into other discussions, we'll go into the first reading, and what I'll ask staff to do is read by title only. If there's no objection, proposed amendment to the Yamhill County Transportation System Plan for the Rail to Trails Project.
And again, this is the same ordinance that was presented earlier. It has additional conditions that have been included in it. This is, "In the matter of approval of an amendment to the Yamhill County Transportation System Plan, a part of the transportation element of the county comprehensive plan," and I'm reading this by title only, having heard no objections to that, "acknowledging the county purchase of an approximately 12-mile segment of a former Union Pacific rail corridor, and immediate plans to develop a multimodal trail in the segment of the corridor extending from the city of Yamhill south to the city of Carlton."
Okay, that is our first reading then, so we will, now we will open it up for more discussion, and we'll start with you, Commission Chair Sterrett.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. Yes, I think at this point, what I would like to do is, as was suggested, it's been suggested in a number of correspondence emails that I've received over the last couple of days, and also Mr. Schmidt pointed out, to separate the two, the Transportation System Plan adoption and the, well, adoption of the farm impact findings as two separate issues. Either to, to adopt them both together in one motion is, I think, you know, putting these two issues together, and they're, and they're not congruent. So, that would be my, I would make a suggestion that we separate these two. One is to adopt the findings as they are and have been amended to reflect, and the other is to adopt the, the trail purchase as a part of the Transportation System Plan. So, I would entertain a motion.
Okay.
I would like to suggest a motion.
I want to make sure legal counsel is clear on your motion, on Mary's motion.
Well, she's moving to separate the two.
To separate the two.
We've had some comment and some requests that the two be separated. They're being presented to you as a unit, and, you know, I've heard no testimony or comment from anyone that persuades me that they have to be separated. I certainly believe it's up to the board to decide if they want to separate them, but I guess if you were going to entertain that, I think you'd have to have some further discussion about why. What is it about separating them that is going to add to or have any further impact on the process?
Okay, Commissioner Primisic.
Well, the motion as was read by counsel is one motion, and I'm very much in favor of moving forward with the motion as it was read by counsel without any changes.
Okay, okay. Little discussion on my part, and there's just a couple of things I want to go over for everybody in attendance. As Vice Chair, and on May 15th, as you're all aware, I had the opportunity, after my no vote, to have a very productive work session with staff and legal counsel to outline my concerns and reasons for voting no on the matter. After our discussion, staff and legal counsel, with my concurrence, modified the TSP amendment with changes that I feel will allow the county to move forward while addressing several concerns I had, one having to do with the farm impact study. Do these changes address all the concerns? No, but I believe that that puts an emphasis on ensuring going forward that the process is open and transparent. There is no doubt that this issue has been, is, and will continue to be an issue that will require open communications, and my vote today, along with the changes, are meant to allow this process to occur. Many of the issues regarding the ownership of the property will be played out in the court system, but I feel since the county has purchased and assumes ownership of the court, or that until settled by the courts, that we can move forward in approving the TSP amendment with the changes I made. And as Mrs. Matthews, so stated in both her testimony and her testimony here today, is I believe there has been a lot of trust lost, and it's going to take a lot to get that trust back. Of course, I certainly want to thank all the citizens, both proponents and opponents, in providing additional information and testimony for the record. I realize that it was not a requirement that the county do this, but I think it was the right thing to do. Any additional information provided, again, will be included in the public record on the issue, and such available to the interested parties. Then, for me personally, as a commissioner, as a citizen of Yamhill County, I just want everybody to know that this tears at the fabric that I was raised on. As being a lifelong resident of Yamhill County, I do not like to see issues like this that become so decisive. Being a supporter of the trail as I am, yet I do have very much empathy for the affected property owners. It is difficult to vote either way or another, but as Commissioner, I'm committed to carry on, no matter what my vote is, my three pillars of effective governance that I ran on: people, process, and policy. No matter what the final outcome is, I will continue following those principles as long as I hold an elected position. And as you know, I hope you've all had a chance to read the changes that were made by staff to the TSP amendment, that I recommended that will allow me to, if any, sleep a little bit better. I want to thank Mrs., Ms. Carrington, I stayed up to about four o'clock this morning, reading all of her, and yours and Brickley's, that was a lot of information to read, and it did give me points to ponder. But based on the conversations Tuesday at our informal meeting, staff has proposed that with the TSP amendment, we make a few, couple more changes, and one of these changes is in direct, direct change made by the, some of the comments that Brian Schmidt had. And it says, in Section 2.5, it is being added-
Of the findings.
Of the findings, excuse me, in Section 2.5 of the findings, it is being added, "Following the public hearing on this matter, a person testified to the board that he has been milking cows within-"
He has milked cows.
He has milked.
Has milked, no, it says, "He has milking," but milked. He has milked cows within 750 feet of the trail corridor to give the realization that there is an agriculture farming, milking operation going on. And then also, in addition, staff has recommended that of the findings, Section 2.8, that it be added in Section 2.8, another paragraph or sentence be added, "A farmer also testified that fire was an issue. There's no reason to believe that trail users present any greater risk of fire than is proposed by users of other public right-of-ways in the county. Additionally, a developed trail will provide greater access for fire response vehicles to areas adjacent to the trail." So, with the changes I asked to be put in, I do believe and I'm committed to an open process moving forward. I have Benson taking office. I figured I must be doing something right, because when I voted yes the first time, first time, I made a lot of my friends and a lot of the opponents upset. When I turned around and voted no, I made a lot of the proponents upset, and at the same time, asking these changes to be made, I upset a lot of the staff. So, that being said, if you're going to upset 100% of the people, you must be doing something right. But I am committed to that process, but because I do want to keep this moving along, and there's a lot, word only at infancy, we're not anywhere near, to me, looking at building a trail. There's a lot that has to be decided, and it's going to take, to me, it's going to take years to do. But for those purposes, I am recommending, I will vote yes on, when it comes time for the vote, I will vote yes for approving the system transportation plan with the amendments that were made.
Call for the vote.
So, I will entertain a motion.
Well, the-
Oh, yeah.
We have to do a second reading.
Now would be the time, if there is no, if there is no more discussion.
Mary, do you have any more, Mary, do you have any more comments?
Yes, I just wanted to just say that this project has shape-shifted over the years, and it's been anything but, I believe, transparent. I think it has done a disservice to the confidence level that the, that the citizens and mostly those who are impacted by this trail would have in county and county government. I myself have been disappointed in it. I think that when you have the Oregon Farm Bureau and the Yamhill County Farm Bureau both weighing in against this project, and having the best interests of the farmers they represent at heart, I think it should tell us something. And I think that we, when we move from one side to the other, and then inexplicably turn around with really no material difference to the mitigation that has been suggested, all along, there's been a talk about collaboration and cooperation with farmers with the quote-unquote charrettes that they've had, and they've talked about virtually no opposition, and that the farmers are all for it, and that everybody loves this trail. And really, that's been, that's completely not true. So, I think that going forward, we could, we put a Band-Aid here, and we put a Band-Aid there, but ultimately, it is basically on the backs of our working farmers. So, for that reason, I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thank you, Mary. And as you probably know, and you know me well, that fairly well, that I am very much committed to make sure, at least during my term of office, that this process is open, and it is transparent, and nobody is excluded from the process. And as I said, does this get us to where we want to go? Definitely not. But I am committed to making sure that process happens, even with the adoption of the TSP amendment. So, I will officially call for the vote, the motion by-
Second reading.
Second reading.
Second reading. I forgot that second reading again. Go ahead with the second reading, by title only, Mr. Sandman.
By title only, hearing no objection. "In the matter of approval of an amendment to the Yamhill County Transportation System Plan, a part of the transportation element of the county comprehensive plan, acknowledging the county purchase of an approximately 12-mile segment of a former Union Pacific rail corridor, and immediate plans to develop a multimodal trail in the segment of the corridor extending from the city of Yamhill south to the city of Carlton."
Okay, thank you. So, for that, then I'll call for the motion?
Call for the vote?
Well, actually, it says-
Make a motion to-
Okay, I make a motion. Do you adopt as presented?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Primisic, that we adopt as presented. Do we have any final discussion or deliberation? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. So, let's start with Commissioner Chair Sterrett.
I vote nay.
Thank you, Mary. Commissioner Primisic?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson also votes yes. So, let the formal record show that the adoption of the Transportation System Plan Amendment is approved on two-to-one commission split vote, with Commissioners Primisic and Olson voting yes, and Commissioner Sterrett, Commission Chair Sterrett, voting no. So, I'd like to thank everybody for attending. That brings that session to close. And again, I definitely appreciate everybody taking part.
We have another item on-
Yes, I know that, we have, but I do want everybody, I appreciate everybody taking part, and I'm sure this is not the first, last conversations we'll have, and this will be a long process, so. All right, Commissioners, moving on now to the rest of our, moving on to the rest of our agenda, the rest of our agenda under other business. We have consideration to adopt Resolution 1805-31-run proclaiming August 7, 2018, as National Night Out in Lafayette, Oregon. I was approached by citizens in Lafayette, asking the county to consider either a proclamation or a resolution adopting the National Night Out for the city of Lafayette. I think we are all in concurrence that that should be done, and the paperwork has been done. So, I will entertain a motion that we approve Resolution Number 1805-31-1.
So, moved.
So, we have a vote of the commission, and let the record show that all three Commissioners, Commission Chair Sterrett, Commission Vice Chair Olson, and Commissioner Primisic all voted.
Well, no, Commissioner, you-
We need a motion.
You made the motion.
And then before voting, generally, what you've done is you've read the resolution into the record before the vote.
Okay, let me see if I have the resolution.
You should have it in the agenda folder.
Yeah, I got to get to it. I saw it in there someplace, but it's just a matter of where it is.
It's in the very back.
Back.
Very back.
In the, yeah, very last item.
It's the last item.
Got it, very good, in plastic. Okay, I will go ahead and read the resolution into the record, and this is Resolution 1805-31-1. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a national community building campaign on Tuesday, August 7, 2018, and whereas the National Night Out champion provides an opportunity for neighbors in Lafayette to join over 38 million neighbors across approximately 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide, and whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, and whereas neighbors in Lafayette assist the local law enforcement agency through joint community building efforts and support of National Night Out 2018, and whereas it is essential that all residents of Lafayette come together with deputies and other organizations to work together to build a safer, more caring community. Now, therefore, the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners call upon all residents of Lafayette to celebrate its neighbors, agencies, and organizations in support of National Night Out on this day, and to hereby proclaim August 7, 2018, National Night Out in Lafayette. And this is to be signed by Commissioner Chair Mary Sterrett, Commission Vice Chair Richard L. Rick Olson, and Commissioner Stan Primisic. So, that being said now, we do have a-
I move that we approve that resolution.
We have a move, and I think I heard you second, Mary?
Uh, second.
Don't need a second.
So, we have moved, we don't need a second, but that's all right, forgive me. We have moved that, so now we can call for the vote. Commissioner Primisic?
Aye.
Commission Chair Sterrett?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson also votes aye. So, let the record show that all three Commissioners voted unanimously to approve that resolution proclaiming National Night Out in Lafayette. Thank you, Commissioners. We don't have any public hearings today, any announcements. So, Mr. Primisic?
Well, I just, I was sorry to see everybody leave, because Yamhill County and the city of McMinnville were represented quite, I just don't know how to describe how wonderfully represented we were nationally on America's Got Talent on Tuesday night by we three, the Humley family, on, they, they just blew the judges away. They got four yeses to move on, and had half the audience crying. It was just really a wonderful thing, and it was, and they presented themselves as we three from McMinnville, Oregon, and it was a very proud moment for a lot of people. So, I just wanted to make-
Very good news, and that was on America's Got Talent?
America's Got Talent was on Tuesday night, and they did pass, they did get four yeses, so they are moving on, so.
Very good. Commissioner Sterrett, do you have anything for the good of the commission? So, hearing none and nothing, and forward to coming aboard, I will adjourn to May 31st formal meeting of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.